All right, colleagues. Once again, this is fourteen hours, two o'clock. Once again, I would like to welcome you all to this afternoon's special session that will run from now on up to around fifteen forty. Just for all of us to take note that as we begin this afternoon session, we have changed our sub-theme from sub-theme one, which was looking at groundwater being an integral part of the hydrogeology system, hydrological system, to a new conference sub-theme of communities, institutions, capacity and local level governance. Before I move on, let me just confirm the presence of our afternoon session chair. That should be Ms Monanku Monika. Are you available?
Yes, yes, Mr Steven Kumwenda, the program director. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm available.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for being there. And also, let me confirm our session repertoire for this afternoon. Brighton Munyai, are you taking it up?
Yes, I'm here, program director. Thank you and welcome back.
All right. This afternoon session promises to be quite interesting session with this sub-theme. And I'm looking forward to one presentation on engaging bio-ancstral voice in modeling local groundwater changes. I think this kind of science relates well with me in terms of the socio-hydrology. But my humble duty once again is simply to welcome you all to this session and hand over, and I'm handing over this session to the chair to take us through the proceedings. Ms Monika, over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, program director. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our afternoon session. And that will be the last session of today's activities. And this falls under sub-theme two on communities, institutions, capacity and local governance. And specifically, the special is the special session on the International Union for Conservation of Nature, that is IUCN. So my name is Monanku Monika. I is the program director introduced me. I'll be the chair for this session with the assistance from Brighton Munyai on rapport one side. So without wasting much of our time, may I now call upon Mr Davison Saruchera for welcoming remarks, overview and objectives of this special session on IUCN. Mr Saruchera, are you available?
Yes, I'm available, Chair. I hope you can hear me loud and clear. Good afternoon, colleagues. In an afternoon wherever you are, most of us in Africa are anyway. And well, a good morning or evening for those on either side of Africa. And welcome to this special session. My name is Tariro Davison Saruchera. I coordinate the water program in IUCN's Eastern and Southern Africa region. I am stationed here in Pretoria. So you're listening for me for my kind of what afternoon in Pretoria. But I'm very happy to be speaking to you once again. Well, we just spoke in the morning. So as we join this session, I just wanted to first welcome you all and thank you for finding time to be part of this and to emphasize that IUCN runs a water governance program called Bridge. So this session is within the context of that program. You will hear a bit more about that program from one of my colleagues who briefly put it in context next. In the meantime, let me just take this opportunity to just briefly give you an overview of what the IUCN, what is water program is, so that you understand where we are coming from. And because there's normally a confusion around IUCN, at least in our experience, where we go, people talk to. Other people think we're a donor. Others think we're an NGO. Well, the good news is that we're none of the above. So IUCN is a membership-based union. So we operate more or less like your typical UN agency. And this union houses, I think, almost all the, you know, the conversation NGOs, the big names that you know, including, for example, WWF, including conservation international and so forth. So IUCN is the only conservation union that is in UN observer status. That means we actually sit in the UN General Assembly as an observer. Who are the members of the IUCN? You're looking at state actors like your national government ministries or departments or government agencies, for example, in South Africa here with Sambi. We're also looking at NGOs, academic institutions, indigenous people organizations, and you can also be part of the IUCN as an individual. So how is IUCN organized? It is organized into basically seven commissions that has most of our expertise, including on protected areas, species survival, ecosystem management, environmental law and so forth. And we have a secretariat that is headquartered in Sicily, in Glan. And then we operate in regional offices. Here in South Africa and East Africa, our headquarters is in Nairobi. So the vision of IUCN is a just world that values and conserves nature. And our mission is to influence, encourage and assist societies throughout the world to conserve the indigent diversity of nature. So at least, well, the core value for the conversation is here that to ensure that the use of natural resources is equitable and ecologically sustainable. And because we share this strong relationship with IUCN, I mean, with the UN and its processes, we have a mandate to contribute to the SDGs. And how do we contribute? We contribute in four major ways. The first is data. We generate data and significant information to guide conservation and action and policy. We also do analysis and recommendations for policymakers and conservationists. That means from the data that we generate, we try to draw out important lessons that can be shared mostly for best practice. And one of our core responsibilities is being a neutral eventer of forums. And this is why you find us in global congresses. You find us even now at COP in Glasgow. We had World Conservation Congress in September and so forth. And well, fourth action, we provide project implementation support and lessons that we gain from these projects. So this is why you find us in these regions, us working with SADAC, us partnering with SADAC GMI and so forth. This is part of action we're supposed to be dispensing to help both our membership and the regions that we work in. So IUCN works through fourteen main themes, including climate change, gender, biodiversity, water and so forth. And I'm particularly just focusing this for us, at least for this event on the IUCN water program. Our water program aims to promote sustainable approaches to the management of water resources. So we use globally accepted approaches, including IWM and within ISARO, that is Eastern and Southern Africa region of IUCN. Our water program operates through four strategic areas. One is water governance and management. Second is investment in natural water infrastructure. That is water for development. And fourth is knowledge development and management. We try to respond to key issues across the water sector as well. And this includes climate induced risks, gender inequality in development interventions, and the promotion of indigenous populations and their rights. So in a nutshell, this is IUCN to you. And it's important that I let you know that we are participating in this Congress. First and foremost, because we are an implementing partner of SADAC, we have some responsibilities on the Regional Strategic Action Plan Five. We had responsibilities in previous ones as well, from one to four. We are also big in promoting the nature-based solutions. You see that IUCN launched the NBS Global Standards in 2020. And we try to promote the use everywhere around the globe. And groundwater specifically becomes important to us because, as you know, aquifers form part of what we call natural water infrastructure, which anyway is part of, you know, one solution, which is a nature-based that can be used as an option for water storage. We are very, very skeptical about building glass, I mean, still-in-water infrastructure. If we can do the natural way, then let's do it like that. So in this session, we just want to send a message there that we really hope to see, especially in the SADAC region, the promotion of better governance of water resources, both ground and surface water. But in this case, specifically shade groundwater aquifers. We also want all the participants here present to note that being a very democratic institutions will promote partnerships and collaborations. So in this session, this is one of the take-home messages that we want you to get, that we open to collaborations and we also want for the collaborations among partners to SADAC GMI and SADAC in general in terms of conserving water resources. And when you leave this session, I hope you feel challenged, want to do more in research so that we build more knowledge around preserving groundwater and in practice, so that we really try to, you know, bring our heads together and work together for the betterment of the region and for the cooperating partners that are in this session. We also want you to feel challenged to invest more, whether investing resources, time, technical, the big stock, money, whatever. This is all that we want you to do. This is our region. We are very proud of our association with SADAC GMI. And we're looking forward to a successful session until, until I think around four o'clock. So thank you so much, Chair. I hope that early good to people loud and clear. And we'll be very happy to answer any follow-up questions from this session. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Davison Saruchera, for giving us such highlights, very brief highlights on the IUCN and specifically on what you are doing on the issues of water resources. Thank you so much. And myself, I had a very long perception. I thought you are, IUCN is a donor. So thank you so much for such clarification. So may I now call upon the second presenter. And that is Melissa, Melissa from IUCN. Are you available? Yes, Melissa, you can proceed.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Once again, my name is Melissa Mavenge. And I work the water program, Southern and Eastern Africa. As my colleague Tarero has mentioned, we work across many themes in IUCN. And under these themes, we have different projects. Bridge is one of the projects. And Bridge stands for Building River Dialogue and Governance. And it is one of the projects under the Water and Wetlands theme. The Bridge project is financed by the Swiss Agency for Development Corporation, STC, and aims to build water governance capacities, mainly supporting the capacities of countries sharing river or lake basins to implement effective water management arrangements through a shared water vision, benefit-sharing principles and transparent and coherent institutional frameworks. The Bridge project is, we can move to the next slide. The Bridge project is implemented in fourteen transboundary river and lake basins in six regions of the world, as is shown on the map. We can go to the next slide. And the goal of the bridge is to make sure that economic growth and nature conservation is enhanced in target basins through more effective water diplomacy and transboundary water management. And the Bridge program works under five key strategic pillars. And this includes demonstration, which is using demonstration and testing of how to make cooperation operational in a basin through confidence and trust building, shared learning and joint action in building national and transboundary water governance capacity. The second one is learning whereby the Bridge use training and capacity building for multiple stakeholders, which include civil society actors, municipal, as well as high-level national officials in water governance. International water law and benefit sharing to enhance knowledge and understanding. The third key strategy is dialogue. This involves applying demonstration actions and learning events to catalyze new dialogues and technical development and political matters for consensus building. The fourth one is leadership. And this involves supporting empowerment of champions for transboundary water cooperation and better water governance who can effectively advocate for mobilization of water diplomacy. And finally, advice and support. This involves providing advice and technical assistance on demand to governments and stakeholders, including legal and institutional frameworks. We can move on to the next slide. So the main objective in Bridge, Southern Africa, is securing sustainable management of water resources for poverty reduction, nature conservation and economic growth, and to enhance international cooperation through effective water governance. What is the outcome is enhance water governance capacity for transboundary cooperation. We can move, okay. Bridge has worked in three river basins in Southern Africa. And this include the Pobusa Basin, where we are proudly supporting the basin roadmap and have been able to use the Bridge project to pull more resources to support this Pobusa roadmap. We also work in the Ruvuma Basin. We have just started work there recently. And we are hoping to be working with partners to build a transboundary platform to support institutions for transboundary water cooperation that are in line with the regional frameworks. We've also worked in the Lake Malawi-Niasa Basin. We can move on to the next slide. Okay. Just lessons learned and where we are heading. Through bridge implementation, we've managed to gain a wealth of information and knowledge. Implementing Bridge across the globe has exposed us to a lot of different situations within shared waters. And each of these situations are unique in their own way, since these basins are different and, okay, in different geological locations. The experiences helped us to develop practical tools to assist in the implementation of water governance. We have also been instrumental in the establishment of some water agreements. We have also worked with key regional and academic institutions here in Southern Africa. There is water need that we've worked with. We are also willing to share our expertise and lessons that we've learned, as well as the tools that we have developed through our vast experience. And finally, just to mention that Bridge is mostly worked on freshwater, but its approach and tools are equally useful to groundwater. And that is why we are in this space, trying to bring Bridge to your attention. We have a concluding presentation that will take you through some of our Bridge tools. My colleague Tarero will take over from there. Well, this is the end of my presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you so much for giving us a brief presentation on the Bridge project. It was really an informative presentation. So colleagues, please, if you have any comments or questions, please put it in the question and answers chat box so that the questions will be responded or addressed later after the presentations. Okay, thank you. So may I now call upon Ife Dola, Ife Aina?
Yeah, that's Ife Dola. Thank you.
You're welcome for your presentation on regulated and unregulated substitutes in water consumption, the case of presidential water in South Africa. You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you very much. Once again, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Ife Dola. So I know I am presenting from, from South Africa. I am a PhD student at the University of Kipton School of Economics. And yes, I'm less than a fifty-five years old. I'll be presenting on regulated and unregulated substitutes in water consumption, looking at the case of residential water in South Africa. I'll talk about the introduction, then move to a brief literature review, then talk about the methodology, which would, which would have my econometric model and also the data I'll be using for this study. Then I'll briefly talk about my results and then end it with some policy implication. As a form of introduction, residential all sorts in all over the world either use the more regulated pipe water or the less regulated groundwater sources like well points. However, despite many improvements in the efficiency recorded in the water industry by water utilities, availability of water to the source is often affected by several bottlenecks, including in population growth rates, which is an issue in Africa. However, a major challenge to water provision is the implication of climate change. Figure one shows the twenty-four months standardized precipitation index map of drought-affected settlements in South Africa. And we can see that most of the regions on the map shows for, shows drought experiences from mild droughts to even to extreme drought in some areas. Because of this challenge, many households secure access and consumption by investing in either the less regulated groundwater sources. Because they discussed their investment by an access to to water by investing in the less regulated groundwater sources. And then by doing this, they are putting, they are putting risk, they are putting the groundwater source at risk of excessive extraction and contamination. However, the first consequence, the first consequence of this is that the water revenue of many cities will lie below your landmine cost and tariff will be, will have to fall below the full cost of supply. When this happens, water utilities would always have to increase the the water tariff to this, to the cities or to different metropolis. And when water tariff is increased, this is also a problem because a lot of people will not be able to afford this tariff. Also, when, when households move from the pipe water supply of the city and invest mainly in the groundwater, they put the groundwater infrastructure of the, of the, of different countries at risk of acute aquifer depletion, contamination. If for coastal regions, there's a possibility of seawater invasion. And ultimately, this threatens the efficacy of groundwater as the, like I just talked of freshwater owned by cities and countries. In this study, we are trying to look for how to, what, how we can contribute to solving this issue of extraction of groundwater. And we are doing this by investigating the effect of water pressure structures and other factors on the substitution threshold of pipe water and groundwater sources for the better planning of water systems. Our first objective is to investigate the determinants of households' decision to use pipe and groundwater supply. Secondly, we will determine the distributional impact of a counterfactual price balance scenario that influences the fixed charge and variable volumetric charge of pipe water. Then lastly, we will estimate the elasticity of both pipe water and groundwater demand in South Africa. As a form of literature review, the first study looked at the main factor that influenced household choice of water source. The factors that have been mentioned over the years include distance from alternative source, inefficient pipe water network, the size of the family and even number of rooms in this household. Other factors include time costs, the implication, the actual implication of the water source, distance, also size and exponential, as well as, as I mentioned before, the impact of climate change. The gap we are filling in this study is that all, almost all the prior studies did not account for the potential influence of regulatory practices on the decision of households to select water sources. And our study provides a critical understanding of how regulated price changes impact access and welfare when users can opt for an unregulated substitute, which is groundwater. For our methodology, we are using a simple utility maximizing model of demand for two water types. The two water types are either the pipe water supplied by the cities and and water utilities and also groundwater that households decide to invest in themselves. Equation one shows that also in particular households could choose to invest in. So yeah, we're showing, equation one shows a pipe water component and the groundwater component as well as a component for other goods that they also spend money on. So QPW is the quantity of pipe water, QGW is the quantity of groundwater, and QB is the quantity of composite commodity consisting of other goods that they also spend what, what they want. Lambda x and lambda b are the levels of common consumption for each commodity group. Alpha and rho are specifications of pipe and groundwater respectively, and beta is marginal budget share. We employ standard binary logistic model to investigate the likelihood of household choosing between the groundwater and pipe water sources. And then to estimate exponential elasticity, we use the quadratic almost idea demand system model. Our data for this study in three phases, with our major data is the, is a panel data from the National Income Dynamic Study of South Africa, where we explore water source choice in the nine provinces of the country. The NITZ data is the panel data that, that ran between 2001 and 2002. between two thousand one, it's two thousand seventeen and it's it's presently in its fifth week. Our final sample comprises of twenty eight thousand eight nine hundred and eighty two observations of fourteen one one hundred and one thousand nine hundred and nine uses groundwater. We also got uh pipe water, water, pipe water tariff data from the Department of Water Sanitation and from municipal button provision, provision applications. We compute and to in order for, because uh groundwater price data, we we got our price, our groundwater price data for uh from the comp- from uh true particular set of competition. Because uh groundwater consumption imposes a different type of cost on the household compared to using pipe water. So we compute groundwater price as an opportunity cost of the monthly price of groundwater extracted by each household, which could correspond to the monetary value of the monthly pumping cost. So the price of groundwater is is calculated as a shadow, as a shadow cost uh using use using the uh amount spent on pumping water to the households per month. Table two here shows the different variables we looked at in our estimation. And the description as well as the the expertise size we 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 hope to see from the estimation. Water price uh is the ratio of groundwater price to pipe water price. And we we you, the creator the dummy variable for if a uh he also pays for water, for pipe water, also if he also owns the 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 dwelling as well as if they have a regular income. Other dummy variables are if they are household doors in the former, in the former settlement or otherwise if the dwelling on the former settlement. We also have variables for meat consumption. The idea for the meat consumption variable is because studies have shown that meat production and meat consume uh also uh and people that use, that take a lot of meat, they use a lot of water. So we want to see if this, if meat consumption affects uh the contribute to the use of groundwater in South Africa. Other variables are add uh the uh the education of the household and if the if the if the household is involved in agricultural production, because this would definitely affect their use of water. I have been uh yeah, presenting a summary statistics of of our data sets. Instead of showing the table, I've just brought out the some of the major points so that a table will not look very clumsy. Our data, in our data sets, quasi the highest number of households using groundwater as their primary water source. Why Houston Province has both the highest monthly household income and expenditure? Why Quasimena also has the the least monthly income and expenditure? Uh, in the northern west province, we got the li- the lowest number of observations, which is, which is one thousand seven hundred and ninety six. And Western Cape has the highest number of red meat consumers. Liverpool has the highest number of households participating in agricultural production from our data set and it's by six percent of respondents in our data set living in formal housing uh like sharks, uh squat asset management and 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 the rest. From our legit, from our legit model, we find that that from our legitimate model, we find us the agricultural uh when the household participates in agricultural activities of uh like household size and men- men's and their dwelling, these are the factors that predict groundwater usage in in the house. Uh, however, the contrary to expectation also shows that regularly include red meat show negative significance to use of groundwater. So this this was a surprise to us. And then lastly, the question, question of also in the Eastern Cape, Northern Cape, Quasimena, not not west, in Malanga and Liverpool are positive and statistically significant. This means that also in this provinces, are we had tendency of using groundwater? We we estimated a counterfactual rebalancing strategy that leads to a twenty percent decrease in pipe water volumetric charge with a subsequent increase in the fixed charge. And then the estimation shows that that in in the Northern Cape, Free State, Quasimena, North West and Liverpool, uh the the balances strategy leads to an increase in the probability of connecting to the pipe water in this, in this provinces. This means that when pipe water uh use increases, there will be less uh pressure on the groundwater of 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 these provinces. We then uh estimated uh the own and
Uh, sorry, sorry, sorry to interrupt. Sorry, Mr. Aina. We are not uh doing good in terms of time. Can you please summarize your presentation?
Yes, thank you. A- after we did uh, we uh estimated the counterfactual price balancing. Uh, then we because uh this uh previous uh the welfare of existing farmers will be of of existing water users will be affected. We then evaluated eh the competitive variation measure, we use the compensative variation measure for our estimate. And on aggregates, the tariff for balance scenario leads to an average monthly welfare gain of three point five nine percent. While overall, the competitive variation estimate for the full sample population in the such a tariff rebalancing leads to a monthly welfare again of five point two million rand in South Africa. Uh, in summary, our, our study suggests that ownership of dwelling, like also said, many rooms in the dwelling and but especially agricultural activities are factors that explain the high groundwater exit in using South Africa. We showed that the rebalancing method estimated in this paper could assist water utilities and cost recovery. Why no can use us to minimize potential impact of the rebalancing on the auto be by reducing the volume of water? So this will also save water in this in in the country. Furthermore, the increased use of pipe water by also due to tariff rebalancing also as a direct implication for lowering the rate of domestic groundwater expectation. Uh, the publicity recommendation, lastly, we recommend, we recommend that to achieve the required return in groundwater expectation. Why simultaneously increasing pipe water subscription, residential water demand needs to be disaggregated based on the characteristics of each of the provinces. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Aina, for your presentation. Colleagues, just uh for information, Mr. Aina is a a young scientist uh under the age of thirty five. And he was presenting on the regulated and unregulated um substitutes in water consumption, the case of residential water in South Africa. Thank you very much, Aina. And so colleagues, just a reminder, uh please remember to put your question under the question and answer box. And also even in the chat box, your questions will be addressed at the end of um this session. So now I can see in in Kusinati, Muyambo is back. Kusinati, can you confirm yourself if you are available?
Thank you, I'm available.
You are most welcome for your presentation on uh engaging a theo and central voice in modeling local groundwater changes towards a contextual theology of indigenous groundwater management in Southern Africa. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, okay, uh this will be a a short presentation. Uh, it's not that much of an a empirical study, but is that uh just I want to motivate maybe the house towards a certain dimension, to think towards a cer- a certain dimension when it comes to groundwater issues. So I also rephrased a bit the question, uh the the title of the presentation to say rewriting the biblical Moses and his Exodus ecological motif. And then that is leading us to what uh doing uh to add a contextual theology and science of doing indigenous groundwater management in Southern Africa. Let's move to the next slide. Okay, um, I'm trying then to to establish and define the problem there that uh I'm trying to bring about. So uh, I'm saying that most arguably, the indigenous theo scientific eco knowledge, which is abbreviated there as I'd say, has the potential to play a central role in interpreting and restoring or managing the debilitating groundwater resources in Southern Africa today, both at the regional and community level. So I'm trying to say maybe we can uh merge science and theology, which is very indigenous, which is very local, eh to try and interpret and understand what's going on our groundwater resources. I'm saying that this can enable the identification, recognition and implementation of culturally appropriate theo scientific strategies for assessing changes in local groundwater resources. Um, in related impacts and also the local adaptation to the projected changes. So since we'll be working with the the local communities, local theology and local faith communities, then also the 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 stakeholders, which include the scientists there. Okay, then uh in this sense, there is significant opportunity for local groundwater resources management practices uh and practices and know systematic place for Southern Africa to engage a more impactful theo scientific groundwater management effort within the region. That's what uh I'm trying to to motivate there, that we have to real eyes, the need for such uh a thinking. And then um uh, so these things, they block me here, the 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 recordings. And then the this inquiry therefore invest investigates the potential for maintaining and utilizing, I'd say, uh by the local communities themselves. And um and how can it can be nurtured to inform formal and informal groundwater management eh in Africa today, in Southern Africa today. Let's move to the next slide. There is a hypothetical standpoint there where I'm saying the interplay between theology and science is now I'm trying to bring us together. I'm saying is say is possibly, it possibly remains obscure and unprecedented when it comes to realistically or practically do groundwater resources restoration in Southern Africa today. You know, some maybe will come with theological theological jack one versus scientific jack one and then will fail maybe to understand eh one another as we try to figure out how we with the situation before. Also, they um um so to manage indigenous theology and science in an effort to interpret uh local groundwater uh changes and also deal with the situation on the ground. And also maybe those African indigenous theologians and scientists, eh they have to. Okay, then I'm modeling the indigenous groundwater management effort there. And then uh what I'm saying there is that um the current inquiry uses a C, a C judge, C judge and X methodology and to analyze and model how modern Southern African citizens can learn eh from uh I don't know, I don't know how I can deal with this message that is that this recording it blocks the 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 screen. Uh, model how Southern African citizens can learn from Moses and his Exodus ecological motif, where he saw a bitter situation beforehand. Eh, the waters at Mara had ten beta, then eh he had to see and he had to judge and acted eh before eh to deal with the aquatic plasma before him. Then uh the inquiry thus analyzes using a contextual people class to interpret and restore and manage the debilitating groundwater resources in Southern Africa today. So I'm using that contextual people class study of the Book of Moses to motivate and provide the resources eh to have that coordinate approach, coordinated approach. Next slide. Yeah, it is not strange that the current uh article propos- proposes that we turn again and read again the mosaic theo scientific eh eh equal experience as we seek to end of all and model credible groundwater resources management in Southern Africa today. Considering that this people car text has a surplus of indigenous, theo scientific ecological meaning. Uh, then the, sorry. It shows Moses interpreting, restoring and managing groundwater changes using natural or scientific means combined with spiritual bravado. Eh, he placed the board there and then he's shown a log. Take it up and and eh put it in the water and the water was brought restored to his and then such a mosaic that teaches us that the combination of theology and science is imperative for indigenous groundwater management in Southern Africa. Okay, let's move to the next slide. Let's move to the next slide. Right, therefore, this current contextual people class study contributes a traditional theo scientific resource that motivates and generates a wide ranging eh indigenous, theo scientific um in in indigenous, indigenous scientific, scientific ecological discourse for groundwater management, that which provides a more localized, interactive and inclusive ecosystem for practical aid keeping and groundwater stewardship ambassadorship in Southern Africa. You know, we have different perspectives when it comes to water issues from the theological point of view. Some some theologians use or some church people use water for certain purposes, for certain rituals and so forth. They go there for baptism and so forth. And then we are saying, let us bring together science and theology to think together on how best we can find that spiritual bravado that we have, that spiritual capacity that we have, combine it with scientific power, scientific capacities to see ourselves maybe modeling uh some strength, a strong um way forward when it comes to dealing with groundwater issues. Okay, then uh let's move. Let's move to the next slide. Then I conclude there to say a more indigenous influence oriented, so influence oriented. At what's at focus Latin, I want to influence thinking, I want to influence, I'm not uh, I know there are few scientists there, there are natural scientists there in this eh space that we have today. So they can maybe try, I try to motivate them, to influence them to eh incorporate the theological perspectives. The doing of groundwater management using African eh resources, African indigenous resources, African eh theological perspectives eh to to model the way forward. Um, so we are saying that eh which is witnesses us doing practical faith and public theology of doing groundwater management, which is imperative. And this form of ecclesiology, which is not the church and preaching, but the function of the church. Let us see the church also functioning within society, engaging with scientists eh in an ecclesiological perspective to model uh a way forward when it comes to dealing eh with groundwater issues. Eh, that will lead us to a practical eh and desirable systematic planning, coordination and social integration. So eh when it comes to to the pursuit of change we want. And then finally, through this indigenous uh mosaic eh theo scientific voice, the Southern eh African communities should be able to persuade, convince, negotiate, engage in groundwater management um dialogues. And then eh that will lead up.
Okay, thank you so much, Kusinati Muyambo, for such a, indeed, it was a a very interesting topic where you gave us a a highlight on theology and science. Very interesting where you explained the potential of indigenous theo san- scientist, scientific eco knowledge. Thank you so much. So colleagues, please, uh if you have comments or questions, please don't forget to put it eh under the question and answer box or chat box. And the presenters are going to address them later. So as uh we are not doing good in terms of So as we are not doing good in terms of time. May I now call upon Josephine Mafuka, Felista Bushoma, and Kusinati Muyambo. Again, can you confirm yourself if you're available?
Oh, yes, I am available. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon, Josephine. Are you Josephine or Felista?
I'm Josephine.
You are welcome, Josephine, for your presentation on sustainable groundwater management and coordinated approach for improved livelihood options. You have ten to fifteen minutes.
Okay, thank you. So that's the title, like you have said, sustainable groundwater management, a coordinated approach for improved livelihood options. Thank you. So I was saying that's the presentation outline, starting with the introduction, the objectives, then move on, as you can see then. On the introduction, I would like to point out that water is a central resource to the Zimbabwean economy, to the people's livelihoods, as well as the social well-being of the people. In Zimbabwe, groundwater is very important because it provides water to more than seventy percent of the country's population. As such, it is a principal source of water to both the communal and the commercial sectors. Since it provides water for domestic purposes, irrigation, even for business in mining and tourism, just to mention a few aspects. Then the challenge is that we have, Zimbabwe is a water scarce country, as well as we have pollution, like the municipal water attempt, it may not be of the good quality for drinking and also there's competition for multiple water users. And this all excess pressure on the use of groundwater. Therefore, this study had the objectives of establishing the groundwater sources, uses, and management with the specific objectives being to establish different groundwater sources in the case study area that I will show in the next slide, as well as to identify their groundwater potential and to analyze the different groundwater management practices. And that's the study area there is in the northern part of Zimbabwe. As you can see, the one on the map that shows Zimbabwe, the one that is clipped with light blue and is called Roshinga District. And from there, we took a word to. This was purposefully selected because it mainly relies on groundwater. There is no, there are no perennial rivers in that study area. To clear out the study, semi-structured questionnaires were used through cloud-based application, COBO Collect. Then we had key informant interviews, focus group discussions, as well as observations. Then on the groundwater potential, we used remote sensing and geographical information systems through, we had maps, the linear drainage and slope maps, which were derived from the digital elevation model and processed in AGI environment. Then we had another map, the Land use Land cover map, which was derived from Landsat eight and processed also in the AGI environment. These four maps were then overlaid. And in AGI, by use of weighted sum to produce the groundwater potential map, it will come later on in the presentation. On the results, there we had, most of the respondents were females, showing that in our African society, women have the responsibility of fetching water. Then in that study area, there were thirteen groundwater sources. And these were the main water sources live for a demo which was at the end of the of the water, at the boundary. And this was used for leftwatering as well as scudding. But the thirteen bohos were the main water sources for that area. Then I have a graph there showing the distances that were walked by the water users to the water sources, as well as the number of trips. It can be noted there that on the number of trips, the most frequent cited number was there were four trips in a day and also that they walked between zero point five to one kilometer to the water source. So a lot of time is consumed while going to fetch water. Then here, we have the number of liters that are fetched by different households having the most common one being the between eighty-one to one hundred liters in a day. That amount of water that's commonly used by individual households. Then that is the groundwater potential map, which is showing that from the legend there. You can see that blue indicates that there is very good potential for the groundwater. But as you go, we have yellow and cream there showing very poor groundwater potential. And in the whole area, you can see that only in the northern parts, that's where we have good groundwater potential. And I think that is the only area where we can have bohos. Then, when we were discussing about the management practices, we found out that mostly the groundwater is managed by traditional leadership water point committees, which are selected by the water users. And there's a government arm which is called District Development Fund, which also has a role mostly through repairs and also maintenance of the water points. And the DDF works with community pump miners through the repairs and the maintenance. There's an arm of the government which is called the Zimbabwe National Water Authority, ZINW. When doing this study, the water users were not aware of such an organization. Yet it is the one which is demanded to plan and to manage all the water resources in the country. Then on the maintenance as well, we asked the water users if they were paying any monetary contributions towards repairs and the maintenance. And most of them, they indicated that they were not paying, as you can see, they that I indicated that about seventy percent were not paying. So this also brought challenges when bohos broke down. Then the main challenges that were cited by the water users were low boho yield. I think you can relate that to the low groundwater potential in that area. So the low boho yield either led the bohos to dry up completely in the summer season where it would be hot and dry. And also it would make the bohos very laborious to pump the water. And this also led to congestion at those bohos, which would not dry up since people to lift their bohos, which would have dried up and gone to those which were not drying up. So there was also a need for flushing, maybe so that then the depth would be increased. Also, unimaginable practices were being done at the water points. I mentioned also the failure to pay monetary contributions earlier on. And also, this was a contributor to breakdowns taking time to be repaired. Then on the conclusion, then we could see that bohos in the form of groundwater were the main water sources in the study area. They also groundwater level was declining. This was reduced from the point that some bohos were now drying up. Then there was a groundwater potential in the study area was very low, except for the northwestern part. Then we noticed that each water point was managed independently. There was no communication between the bohos on how they should manage the water sources. So this led now that coordinated approach and how they could make sure that they use the groundwater sustainably. Then on the recommendations there, I would give the recommendation that installation of bohos or high water use could be concentrated in the northern parts where there was good groundwater potential. And also the study recommends that a coordinated approach in groundwater management be done by acknowledging that although partially the bohos are separated, but groundwater is actually interconnected. There is also a need to improve the design standards so that the bohos become resilient and do not dry off during the dry summer seasons. I thank you. That was my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Josephine Mafuka. Colleagues, we are not doing good in terms of time. Time is not on our side. May I now call upon Mr. Jonathan or Kevin Peterson? Can you confirm yourself if you're available?
Yes.
Regarding the investigating local level institutions and groundwater management approaches in the boho land, borderland communities of the Horn of Africa.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to give this presentation. Interesting discussion. I've noted that Moses was the first hydrogeologist as when he struck the rock, water came. So very interesting. So the work I'm presenting forms part of a larger programmatic advisory services and analytics initiative of the World Bank entitled Strengthening Resilience in the Horn of Africa, which was aimed at identifying and strengthening regional approaches to resilience building in the Horn of Africa region, including the knowledge base on the role of formal and informal social and governance-related institutions in the resilience. I was the groundwater institutional advisor to the project, which consisted of a team led by Sweco International as the lead consultant with Mettaferia Consulting Engineers, La Corre Missionen, and Terra Solidale as associates. Here, I will focus on investigating local level institutions and groundwater management approaches in the borderland communities of the Horn of Africa. And the focus was on the countries of Djibouti, Ethiopia, Kenya, and Somalia. So the assignment comprised a qualitative research study on groundwater management in Horn of Africa and had four goals. Firstly, to identify the main uses of groundwater in the region and the role of communities in managing groundwater. Secondly, to understand the relationship between community and community institutions, the formal national frameworks and institutions for groundwater management. Also to examine changes in institutional responses and interactions as well as household and community strategies in response to shocks over time. And then basically to identify, or lastly, to identify the specific barriers hindering institutional functioning and make concrete recommendations for the improvements. The groundwater analysis was guided by the following research questions. Question one was basically how do communities and community institution interact with the formal national frameworks and institution in relation to the management of groundwater? Question two, what is the role of groundwater and groundwater management in community and household resilience? Question three, what are some of the effective community-based approaches to groundwater use and management, specifically in the Horn of Africa, but also elsewhere, which can be drawn on to form the Horn of Africa Initiative interventions? Here, I will basically just focus on question one, which is basically how do communities and community institutions interact with the formal national frameworks and institutions in relation to the management of groundwater? So the project methodology was basically based on a combination of qualitative research methods, including community focus group discussions and key informant interviews that enabled collection of data and material as field evidence for the groundwater management analysis. So we had three phases, which was basically research, design, which was the preparation phase, followed by field data collection, and then obviously data material analysis, which culminated into a final report. This map just provides an overview of the study area and selected case study areas. So the case study areas included Tokwajali between Ethiopia and Somalia and Muyali in the borderlands of Ethiopia and Kenya. A third case study area was the Far Triangle, bordering western Djibouti and northwestern Ethiopia, but it could not be visited due to security concerns during the field research stage. This figure gives a summary of the focus group discussions conducted. All the participants in the focus group discussions gave the informed consent to take part. The total number of participants that was interviewed as part of this process was a hundred and seventeen, of which forty-three were women. This graph just provides an overview of the different occupations of the participants of the focus group discussion, as shown in the figure and how they've identified themselves. Most of the participants were agro pastoralists, with the next highest occupation housewives, followed by pastoralists. The key informant interviews that were conducted were used to generate data from key informants from the Horn of Africa countries as well as from World Bank staff for Djibouti, Ethiopia, Kenya, Somalia, and Sudan. So we conducted a total of fifty-one interviews. The key informant interviews were held with persons that provided deeper insights into the use and management of groundwater. Purpose of sampling was used to identify stakeholders for the key informant interviews. This was a convenient sample, but efforts were made to ensure that the stakeholders come from a range of backgrounds. So the key informants included representatives of water management institutions, international agencies, private sector, and non-governmental organizations which were involved in groundwater management. Also, efforts were made to identify stakeholders vertically from national to local organizations and horizontally between countries located in different parts of the borderlands. The key informants also included relevant community level persons responsible for groundwater management at local level, for example, water management coordinators and water user association. So just presenting some of our findings. So in terms of transboundary institutions, there are no formal transboundary organizations. So in terms of transboundary institutions, there are no formal transboundary organizations in place dealing with groundwater. Uh management Ethiopia and Kenya are part of the Nile Basin Initiative and have thus. Experienced informal transboundary water organization and management of shared water resources at regional and local levels. Albeit the focus is on surface water, this experience will support the groundwater program. Um Kenya as an example has established a transboundary water department with functions that include. Promotion of cooperation, establishment and public service institutions around transboundary waters. Promotion and adoption of relevant international water law principles and promotion of ratifications. The department also consolidates and disseminates relevant data and information on transboundary waters in Kenya. The Intergovernmental Authority on Development is a regional organization. That focuses on area of cooperation dealing with agriculture, natural resources and environment. Um cross borders clusters has been identified by EGAD based on the importance in terms of. Human and animal cross border movement and the need for regional cooperation. Interestingly, the key, the classes were identified obviously by the key informant at practicing at transboundary level. But not by key informants at national and subnational levels. Uh meaning that more promotion needs to take place. There are obviously a number of transboundary actors that are shared between the Horn of Africa countries. But unlike perhaps Sadek, not much information is available about these transboundary actors. Although a recent study has been launched to study the multi aquifer. So there was recognition by the key informants that lack of knowledge of groundwater system is a constraint to utilization. Further countries have not invested in groundwater exploration, monitoring and management. The other challenge is that limited hydrogeological skills and capacities in some countries are constrained. To 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 exploration and and use of groundwater resources. When we come to formal institutions, formal institutions have created pressure on the the pastoralists. And the pastoral economy. Because basically the interventions were based on the wrong assumption that pastoralism. Is backward extravagant and unfit for modern way of life. That is policies were were geared towards pursuing large scale commercial agriculture. The establishment of national parks and the settlement of of those communities. So basically most states have pursued policies based on containment. Pacification and securitization of pastoralists. When we come to a sub national level. Uh throughout the region, the poor operation and maintenance of groundwater. Schemes is a challenge throughout the region and that obviously also manifests manifests in our region. So you're finding issues of dramatic escalations of prices in goods and commodities. Which result in the difficulties to 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 source parts. There's also limited budgets to improve the water supply uh system and also limited financial capacity managing. The water fees. What is, what is what's interesting in terms of of finding come out of coming out of the 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 analysis was. That some communities felt that it was better to interact with political structures than with the groundwater management. Institutions rather than rather they felt more comfortable interacting with politicians. Like for example, the area member of parliament and the governor's governor because they they are the ones with the power. To influence groundwater management. Uh in some cases, it was mentioned that politicians have made communities not interact with legal groundwater. Management institutions but with themselves. There was also a sense that they are more legal institutions than necessary and that they have overlapping. Roles or responsibilities with confusing mandates. Um when it comes to informal institutions, the borderlands support livelihood systems and opportunities. For for millions of people through agriculture, pastoralism and trade. So informal institutions and clan or ethnic affiliations regulate cross border. Migrations, cattle transhumans, regional trade flows and also water access. So traditional and informal community institutions play a significant role. In managing trade relations and resolving disputes in areas.
Uh sorry, Mr. Kevin, sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Yes.
Time, time is not on our side, two minutes left.
Um so basically they have developed coping mechanisms over millennia for managing. Water resources hence the understanding and the importance of water in managing rain. Plans with dry and wet seasons are are important. So basically people know how to to um to um manage their water systems. Although women are represented in water committees, one key. Informant noted that women and other socially excluded groups such as the elderly people living with disabilities. Disabilities youth poor are underrepresented in decision making structures and grievance. Grievance mechanisms in water committees and traditional conflict management system. So they are particularly marginalized in decision making uh in decisions that affect their their lives and livelihoods. So just then to conclude, Madam Chair, uh so the main findings findings from the study were that. Governments have very limited knowledge of groundwater resources in the borderlands and transboundary access. Which pose a problem of planning and developing water resources to meet the population water demands in the borderlands. Um informal institutions and clan or ethnic affiliations dictate access to natural resources such as groundwater. And conflict resolution in the waterland areas. Um transhumans is the primary coping mechanism to drought. Groundwater development should therefore be carefully planned in terms of risk. Degradation, loss of ecosystem resilience and also access to to resources especially. Uh women, youth and internally displaced people. Um multi dimensional strategies including integrated planning for. Groundwater resource development and pastoral institution building are required. To increase the resilience for both groundwater resources and communities. I thank you for your attention, Madam Chair.
Uh thank you, thank you very much, Kevin Peterson, for your brief but very informative presentation. Please, we are now going to have our last presentation for today's last session. And that will come from IUCN. May I now call upon um Mr. Saruchera? Mr. Saruchera, are you available?
Yes, I am sure.
You are welcome, sir, on a presentation on uh. Understanding bridge tools and research perspective. You are welcome and for your information, you have ten minutes.
I would try to get this done in ten minutes. Uh my colleagues spoke with you earlier about what bridge does. And now I just want to take you through. Um let me call this a practical step by step implementation of a typical. Bridge project and hopefully. Please remind a bit, challenge you a bit and then ask you some questions at the end. I don't want you to answer them here, I want you to take the questions home. Because half the time, we talk about the lessons we learn, we talk about what we've managed to bring in terms of best practice. But we do not talk about the lessons. There's plenty out there that we don't know that we need to know and we should do more to bring that into water governance. So when we are doing bridge, how do we bring people together to make the demonstrations we were talking about? Uh how do we build capacity? These are just some of the um interventions that we do. On a convincing and facilitating dialogue, including coaching on water diplomacy negotiations. And we've been doing this in certain businesses in the region. And I'm happy to say that we have met with a little bit of, you know, proud success. And some very informative disappointments along the way. We also talk about the, you know, the adoption of reform in terms of policies, laws and agreements. Because we mostly talking about shared water courses, there are treaties that, you know. Accompany the signing of a treaty of river basin agreements, whether this is just a treaty on the river. On the shared aquifer, while we're talking about setting up a secretariat which it should be and do. So in terms of approach. How do we get bridge to be working? We try to influence the processes first with by trying to keep the ecosystem. Um space within its ecological and sustainable um level of function. So the integrity of the ecosystem is important and we actually marry that to the human well being because. We we don't want to manage the ecosystem purely for the ecosystems sake. But we are trying to manage what people do to an ecosystem. So the human well being when you couple it with the ecosystem means. We our intervention is centered around adapting certain capacities. Uh this is to climate change, to water hazards, you know, trying to promote. The best that people can get out of the land without disturbing this ecosystem. I'm asking colleagues to just keep checking the what I have on this because I only have too much time to talk. But bridge in general seeks cooperative and peaceful relationships. So at the center of it, we are promoting effective water governance through establishment of dialogue platforms, consensus building. Policy and legal reforms and strengthening of institutional frameworks. Every center of it all is this, wherever you have water body, whether this is surface water. Being a river, a lake or you have an aquifer. It's challenged there before you go to any science. Is that you're looking at water users that have a variety of needs. A variety of interests and priorities. And this span across, you know, environmental, social, economic, political, all the way to cultural priorities. So what then becomes important is the negotiation in this space. To make sure that every user gets what they need to get. So in this space, this is where we 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 created one of the central bridge tools. And I'm saying created because we we the idea behind benefit sharing is global. The way to actually now do the benefit sharing, you know, the practice is still very strong and the lessons. To learn from there, I I could say just to be polite, are still really to be learned. So in bridge, we have what we call a benefit opportunity analysis toolkit. This is abbreviated as BOD, that is very apt and I'm just displaying there some of the. Benefits, whether I mean the social benefits, economic benefits, uh benefits and so forth. Oh, the benefit sharing approach is one of the central strategies around bridge. Ems to bring win-win outcomes for multiple stakeholders within a river basin and, you know. This also applies to groundwater, that that means within, I mean, users across boundaries on shared aquifers. Whatever they are, and the focus here is on the distribution of benefits instead of. The allocation of the water resource itself. So as Melissa pointed out, you'd see that most of the work that we've been doing with bridge. In South America and Southeast Asia and Africa is mostly been with surface water. We have been working for the past three years in the Suma Malaba Malakis Basin in East Africa. And this is one of the case studies where we scored some success around the use of BOD as a tool. And what did we learn in doing this in all these spaces? Um we have managed to, it started with kind of some almost fifteen steps. And we're trying to refine this tool, now we are all the way down to six steps. And we're still refining this as we go. It's important to mention here that, you know, we 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 started identifying the step orders and maybe. Influence. Now, when you say this on a discussion table or in a research paper, this sounds all very simple, because all you have to do to sit down and. Or going to visit and observe who is using water. But believe me, mapping out the interest and influence of users is a different book game altogether. And what you find in this amazing is not what you're going to find in the book. So you actually spend a lot of time in that space to understand this interest and once you have done that. You then need to know the range of existing and potential benefits. My emphasis here is on the potential. We are living in a very changing climate, so the benefits that are present today may not be the benefits that are present in five years' time. So while you're talking about sharing benefits, you actually need to have a panoramic view of it. And think of it within a time span, not just scale, and this is one of the hardest things to do. Then you go to this third step of building the benefit enhancing scenarios. I still remember in my um my work in in the Engomat with my previous employer, when we were trying to do this. I don't think I'm at a story, um in the Okavango, when we were trying to do this with Namibia, Angola and and this one. And again, here you are really dealing with a lot of interests at different scales. The benefit scenario at a local scale is different from the benefit scenario at a national scale. And just to give you an example, when in the Okavango, when they're talking about agricultural land in the headwaters. To grow sugar, irrigation and so forth. What was happening there was that at a local scale, the local people were happy about thinking about this. But the problem was at a national scale downstream in Boskana because. Their argument was if you take a drop of water out of the river. You are actually killing the delta and you're talking about, you know, around society. So the discussion now had to go back to a more at a national level now, and you can see how this dynamics play. And it is important now that when you think of this, when you are using a river. It's more complicated and hopefully less complicated with a lake or an aquifer because. You're dealing with something that is geographically limited, it's a limited space. In terms of the existence of the water board itself, not the resource. And the fourth step is then estimating the cost and benefits from future scenarios. But this also actually starts with the current scenarios. And I wish I had more time to actually give you more examples around how this has been running out in the work we do. Because before you go to the stage where you start negotiating the benefits. You really need to have a comprehensive solid story about what benefits we have now and what benefits may we have in twenty years. And what is the value of the benefits now and what is the value of benefits in twenty years? This is what informs, you know, what the local, the legal people call the fulcrum of the negotiations here. And it is very interesting when you do this with different stakeholders in each person. And in this case also in each aquifer. I am just happy to show you these steps for now, but I would invite you to actually learn more about this. Um outside just this platform. What lessons have we been learning when implementing what is a tool? Like I said earlier, you you underestimate these things on paper. Once you go into an actual project site, the discussion becomes very, very different. So mountain level and cross sectoral dialogues. Faceted cooperation to identify beneficial benefits. And now the emphasis I really want to make here is on the cross, uh cross sectoral dialogues. When you're looking at water users. In any setup, you 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 will find that the frequent water users that you see every day. you 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 will find that the frequent water users that you see every day may not be the most influential or may not actually use the water in the most beneficial sense when compared to other users. And then the discussions that you're going to have around it become very complex and they become very challenging. But this is what we have been seeing that look, try to bring in as many actors as possible, even those that don't look like they actually use the resource that often. Those that look like they may not be interested in what goes on, you will be very surprised that the big, the biggest actors on the water body may actually exist outside, you know, uh, the scale of the water users in that basin. And then second, effective water governance based on policies and agreements, not just the policies on paper, but how they are implemented, how they are monitored and how you actually try to enforce compliance. In most cases with water policies, whether at a regional or national level, we normally have the carrots, but we never have the sticks. So you try to incentivize compliance, but once it does not happen, when you don't have a stick, you have to think best how to make this particular user, you know, uh, conscious of other users. Uh, third, and to me personally, this becomes one of the most important. The water institutions we build, whether national, transboundary scale, they require technical and financial capacities. In the region, I think we have a bit of, let me not call it a problem, but I think we have been babysat for a long, long time by a lot of cooperating partners. And when you look at the landscapes that we work in, and I want to say this also very strongly because we have um senior people from government departments here. Please set this with an open mind. When you look at the political priority around water, you will realize that we normally get political attention when there's a problem, when there's a huge drought and what's at stake, when there's a big cyclone and the media is there. But outside that, do we get water on the agenda every day? Is the minister of Water the most powerful guy in the company? Or is the Minister of Water that just one of that spent politicians who just given that placatory position because they're comrades from the liberation movement and replace them somewhere? But in actual sense, do they really have the gravitas to pull a budget allocation from from home affairs or from defense to go to the preservation of of an aquifer? I I I'm just throwing this in the open for you to think about it. I don't want to reshare the experience in case I say the wrong things. And finally, sustainable investments are key. And by investments, we do not necessarily mean just money. Whether you are programming uh uh investments into water governance at a local level, at a business level, at a transboundary level, uh, the kind of time, the kind of collaborations, the kind of interest, the kind of research that we need to put there are very critical. But then there are the lessons we must learn. I'm just talking about the lessons that we've learned today. But we have not led, learned a lot of other lessons that are important for governance, that are important for benefit sharing as one of the tools that you use uh water governance. Principles that should actually accommodate benefit sharing if not really uh out in any convincing manner we're learning as we are going. And when you look around, you know, the 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 research landscapes, up to now, I'd like to challenge anyone to say, okay, we have a certain ten principles we should follow. These have been tested and approved, oh, here and here and here and here's evidence. Understanding when we should introduce benefit sharing, whether on an aquifer or on a shared basin, is critical. Do we start by thinking about it before we sign the treaties on the shared water body? Do we wait until we form some kind of shared technical cooperative platform where this is discussed? Or in case of surface water, until we have actually built a river basin organization in a secretariat? Do we have benefit sharing going into the treaty or we actually have that after the treaty has been signed? And what are the standard institutional arrangements that we should have to make the benefit sharing effective? And then have we really learned about the benefits that come from groundwater? We have plenty that come from surface water that I can point out to. Oh, we can talk of irrigation, they can talk of hydropower. Uh, because you can say, okay, this is the quantity of water going to use for this. Well, this is consumption, this is a non-consumption. But then if we are talking about groundwater, that, okay, you can use that for hydropower. So how do we actually come to benefit and then account for them? And what kind of uh financial models should we be looking at to make the benefit sharing sustainable? I just be patient, I'm almost done, I know I'm eating into a minute now. From these lessons we have learned, from these lessons we have not learned, but are still to learn, and please, these questions you see on these slides are not in any way exhaustive. I'm just trying to, you know, get my mind jogging there. So I'm asking researchers here, um, and especially young researchers. I don't mean that old ones are not important. Apologies to Modric, Pete, Kevin and so forth. IU CN also loves old people, that's why they're keeping me. But my bigger challenge is to the young researchers. When you're looking at, you know, how the world is changing, how the landscape in terms of water use is changing, what should we be researching on? What, how can we build more knowledge to make water governance effective through the benefit sharing approach, just as one of the approaches that we use to make, you know, water governance effective? So first question to you, how do you manage benefit sharing in a changing context? And by changing context, I especially just want to point out the climate change. Where you you have an aquifer now that may be way, way, way depleted after five weeks. What kind of technical capacities do we need for benefit sharing to actually work? Have we done the research and say, okay, this is the capacity we need? And at what level should each city, national government, regional board, exalag, uh, water management institution, local authority or what? Now, from our cases, we actually have areas where benefit sharing has been working in other areas where it's really not been working that well yet. But one of the things you'll find out, you know, convincingly is, why has it worked the way it is? And why has it not worked the way it is actually fair? This is some of the knowledge you need to be bringing for us to make the next step, especially in the region. What kind of knowledge should we bring and what has been working for us in Lake Titicaca in the Americas region? Can it actually work here in Lake Malawi? I hope you're actually taking these questions to heart. But anyway, are there any tested theoretical approaches that have succeeded? And I know for for in the academic sector, you don't actually talk about a question before you frame it theoretically, talking about theoretical frameworks. So it's also important for us in the practice side of things because it's a strategy of that science policy in this. How do we frame this and have we tested enough and what are we finding out? So what conclusions can we actually make? Remember, this region was still even mapping aquifers, we've not done it. Don't know how many aquifers we have, how many of those are shared, how many are not. And this is a very key question. What type of regional framework do we need? For surface water, we have a shared protocol, right? I mean, the protocol on shared water courses inside that, right? And when we talk about groundwater, whether you're having a similar document at SADAC level, when you're talking about an actual policy, like we we look at the SADAC water policy and so forth. Do we have something that we can probably put on a table and say, this is a kind of framework we believe works and have tested it? If we have not tested it, why have we up to now and when are we going to test it? And what should we find out from it? At what level should benefit sharing be negotiated? Within a river basin, lake basin or aquifer landscape, you know, just looking at the local users? Or should this be happening at a regional scale, at a national scale or what? And if this negotiation is done at a local scale, then at a national scale, do we have different outputs in the way? And as IU CN always asks the session, what kind of partnerships do we need? To effectively investigate all these questions that I'm asking you. Like I said, you don't have to answer these questions now. But what kind of partnerships do we need? I'm not just talking about partnerships, you know, among those of us, for example, who are at this event. But partnerships everywhere, partnerships, you know, within the academic sector, the police sector, the practice sector, the donors. And as we speak now, how many of the young researchers we're finding here are actually tied to projects that are trying to find something out? And what kind of help are we actually extending to this, any of these regions specifically? In terms of technical capacity, in terms of financial resources, how much of it are we actually bringing down to the science level, uh, to the collaborations and so forth? So I just, you know, wanted to be cruel and make you eliminate all these questions and ask yourself these questions as you go to sleep today. What more should we be doing in order to make the governance of both ground and surface water more effective? Governance of shared water uh uh effective. What is just one tool within plenty others? And I'm just sharing a webpage there where you can actually go in and find out more about what we try to do in water governance within IU CN's water program and what we also uh do in terms of developing these tools and learning from them. This is a journey, it's not a destination. So I'm still very much in this practice space and would love to actually work with more knowledge coming from the research side that will help us implement more projects, learn lessons. That's the only way we can actually bring the best practice. Thank you, Chair.
Um, thank you, thank you, Mr. Davison Saruchera for your presentation. So colleagues, we have come to an end of um our last session for today. I can see we have some few questions on the chat box. I believe all the presenters are available for the questions. So I can see the first question is directed to Mr. Aina. Mr. Aina, are you available? Okay, if Mr. Aina is not available, I think we can move on. Uh, there was also, um, I think this is a suggestion to Ms. Dankosinati, who presented the issue of theology and science. And he's saying this has to be the most interesting framing of a research question I have ever seen. Uh, it's true, um, are you available, Dankosinati? Maybe you can chip in on that.
Perhaps some of the presenters have left the platform.
Okay.
So we might just move on.
All right, that was another question to Kevin Peterson. A very interesting study, thanks. Would it be possible for you to share the study? I can see you have already responded to this one. But there's also another question. Thank you so much, Kevin. I'm doing a study of the AF fifty-nine, but I understand why you could not do fieldwork there. Peterson, are you available? Can you respond to that question?
Yes, Madam Chair, you can hear me. So so yeah, I think it's just a comment around the AF fifty-nine, which is the uh transboundary aquifer in the Farthra Triangle, which is very difficult uh to visit because of the conflict that was, that that is taking place uh in in that region, which has overspilled from the Tigray region to that aquifer. So we could not do any fieldwork in that region. So I think it was just a comment to 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 that uh contribution.
Thank you, thank you, Kevin. Um, colleagues, I cannot see any other more question on the chat box. So this marks the end of this special session. Okay, colleagues, so thank you so much for your time. Thank you for your participation to this special session on IU CN. And a special thanks goes to IU CN for hosting this session. Thank you very much. I'm sure that that today, um, all our participants are aware of who are you as IU CN and what are you doing, especially on the bridge project. So um, may I now hand over this closing session to the program director, Mr. Steve? Mr. Steve, are you available?
Yes, I am. Uh, thank you very much, Miss Manaku Manika, for coordinating the just ended session. And of course, Brighton was on the rapportuary. Uh, this has been quite an interesting and intriguing session. Uh, thank you so much, uh, IU CN and Bridge for letting us know how you're doing your work around water governance, particularly on transboundary water cooperation arrangements. And there's some great insights on also on regulated and unregulated substitutes in water consumption in terms of groundwater users and pipe water users. And I asked Aina on this one, on pipe water users, if it meant exclusively surface water. I'll I'll link up with him later. And then also very interesting and bringing a different dimension altogether was Dankosinati's presentation on ISIC, uh, simply indigenous groundwater management, applying the knowledge from our our sisters. Uh, it got really some of us in a spiritual bravado. And then Kevin Pedersen also, this piece of work in terms of uh uh investigating local level institutions in groundwater management on the horn part of Africa, where informal and formal institutions are at play at different institutional structural levels. And finally, Bridge again brought us uh some insights on the tools that can be used uh for uh work in terms of corporations and implementing policies, which I think were quite critical and who posed some serious questions. Uh, particularly what struck me was, are our water ministries in our countries powerful and influential enough to drive the agenda we are discussing here? And he has left very critical questions for further exploring, particularly on regional frameworks that we need to support as a SADC block. At this point, ladies and gentlemen, we are almost towards the end of this special afternoon session. It's been a pleasure for me to be the program director for day number two of the uh fourth SADC Groundwater Conference. Um, I am Steve Komenda from Best Floor in Malawi. Uh, in fact, I was sitting in for the Deputy Director of Water Resources in the Ministry of Forest and Natural Resources, Mr. Muletta, Prince Muletta, who delivered some opening remarks yesterday, but today he's got some two commitments. At this juncture, maybe before I humbly hand over to Tukozani, there is a poll uh reading from the questions that we got recently. Okay, from the uh from the polls that we have, there was a question on remote sensing being utilized in the region. Do we think it's really being utilized in this region with our challenges of data? And quite a good number, sixty-two percent of respondents have indicated it can be improved, while others, nineteen, uh, twenty-nine percent indicate, no, we are not fully utilizing remote sensing data. And ten percent of respondents indicate, yes, we're using it. And another question, I think, critical one, I'll go to the fourth one. Management of groundwater-dependent ecosystem is potentially a transboundary phenomena. How many agree to this? Sixty-two percent did agree and none didn't. A fourteen percent of respondents, not sure. Whilst twenty-four percent indicated, it depends on underlying aquifers. So this is quite an interesting reflection of how we understand the groundwater-dependent ecosystems and how also we apply remote sensing uh applications to to get data. So at this point, I think I can humbly hand over to you, Tukozani, if there are any conference updates that you might need to inform us. Thank you.
Uh, TK, I I think you did it just to thank everyone for today.
Uh TK, I I think you did it just to thank everyone for today. Another successful day um we've gone through and like we are really hitting high notes tomorrow. So let's all meet and enjoy the day. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, colleagues. Good night and we'll see you all tomorrow. Thank you. Bye bye.
Thank you, everyone. Bye. Bye bye.
Thank you.
Cheers all. Bye.
Yes, bye.